Good evening, everyone. My name is Laura Schifrin and I'm chairman of the planning board, and I call this meeting to order at 6:31 PM on Monday, April 29th, 2024. Would you please stand with me for the meeting? I currently just require the United States of America and the Republic of Canada to extend our nation's rights and individual liberty and justice for all. Thanks, everyone, and I wish to thank our veterans as well as our currently serving military and first responders. And I would just like to say we'd like to have everybody stay safe because it has not been fun lately. Um, like a roll call, please. Carol Hoxes present.
Andrew Shepherd present. Robert Darian present.
And Laura Schifrin present. All right, the meeting is being recorded. It's also live and you will be able to see it on YouTube in a few days. I have no additions or deletions except that I received a message from Beth who's on vacation. And the planning board rules and regs fee schedule has been submitted to the clerk. And update, something about a code update and are now on the website. So that seems to be accomplished. Okay, so that was in addition to what we had on the agenda. And then 1.5, there doesn't seem to be any minutes. Um, I don't have copies here. They were not in our portal. So I'm going to say that just ran out of time before she left and actually I would like to move, I can't move it to May 6th. So can I have the motion to move that to May 20th meeting?
So moved.
Oh, second, okay. Any discussion? Hearing none. We have a roll call vote. Carol Hoxes, yes.
Robert Darian, yes. Andrew Shepherd, yes.
Laura Schifrin, yes. Thank you very much. Wow, so we have a few minutes. And I'd like to use that time wisely. Okay, so how about if we go to under correspondence? Okay. I'll just tell you that 4.1 is the zoning board of appeals notice of the station on three wheeler road. And it is in your portals. So
It was granted.
It was granted. There were two motions for granting, so that seems to be closed at this point. Um, just a provision that they report before January 1st, January 31st of each year. Okay, so that was good. Um, 4.2 is the MBT community compliance. And um, this is also in the portal, but also the um, the full description, I think it's like eight pages. But just briefly, what um MRPC, oh, actually what's on there is is what MRPC is working on for us, which happens to be the directing of the bylaw language, public outreach, creation and printing of deliverables, selection process for communities, but not limited to what they're working on. But also um the accessory apartment bylaw language 145-36. They're going to make sure that what we did was correct. I don't think it was not what they did. Anyway, there's a lot of um parts, if you will, to that um MBTA
One rule only.
Compliance. It's in the portal.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
Okay.
And any one of these things that they've already done is already in the portal. And their full description of everything that they're doing is in the portal. And that was 1 and 2. 3 is um the remote participation policy, which I also printed off myself. I don't know if you guys, there's Reddit.
I read it. I, I guess I thought that was the policy all along. I guess it just means that you have to have it. You had a choice of not having it before.
I don't know because, well, supposedly it was extended. Oh, I thought it was extended to March of '25 for the state. So I, I think this is something that the Board of Selectmen put into effect, like in writing, on behalf of the town versus what they had before. I don't think it's
I didn't think the policy was any different than what we were already following.
Well, the policy was created because of the COVID thing that began with. I own, my only comments are not just in this board, with the other board. A lot of the board members are present remotely. And there have been instances where they're distracted doing something else and we have to appeal to them to scroll on. Then there were other instances that they had been here present. They could have signed the documents or seen the documents physically. Um, and so in that regard, it would discourage it to extreme circumstances or something, in my opinion, you know?
I, I understand what you
I mean, we all make an effort to be here as much as we can.
Yeah, I actually had to do a voice vote and a roll call that we're all here. So I really didn't have to do that tonight.
Right.
We're on purpose.
So I, I think that should be looked at again and refined so that it's just not going to be that way forever. You know, otherwise we all could stay home and just do remote hearing.
I think you can have one person here unless weather or something like that.
Well, let's see, my preference is in person anyways, but unless it's like weather wise.
Or health wise, I mean, somebody
True, yeah.
I have a cold, I don't want to give every
I have a cold.
That's legit, but not having it repeatedly, you know, have the same member consistently use that for me.
No, I understand there are home distractions.
Right.
Okay, so before we get to the hearing, 4.4, Andrew, would you handle?
4.5. The notices?
4.1.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha.
4.
Got it. Legal notice.
I think it's 4.
Yep, or our legal notice? Or do you want to read the correspondence?
Notices from other towns?
Oh, this is, you may read that.
Read that.
That's one of the four that you're going to read.
Gotcha.
And it's from Townsend. It's for next Monday night.
Gotcha, right.
I have the one for tonight.
Sure. Uh, Office of the Planning Board of Townsend, legal notice. Um, this is for, legally, do I have to read the whole thing or can I summarize? This one for next week?
Just, you can summarize. We don't have to do personal, do the, make sure you do the address then.
Uh, Townsend Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, May 6th, 2024, at 6:45 PM in the Selectment Chamber, Memorial Hall, 272 Main Street, and on Zoom to see if the town will vote to amend the Townsend zoning bylaws to change the zoning of the property depicted on an accessories map, 6 block 11 lot 0, and having an address of 39 Greenville Road and the adjacent property depicted on the accessories map, 5 block 12 lot 0, and having the address of Greenville Road owned by ADSD Realty LLC from the industrial to residential, or take any other action in relation there too. Uh, additional information is available for review at the offices of the Planning Board and Town Clerk.
Right, so we're holding the public hearing, but it's the efforts of the Board of Selectmen. Remember, he was here at the last meeting? He was here, no, it might have been
Before.
One before, but okay.
Correspondence. Uh, Town of Ashby, uh, their planning board, a legal notice of public hearing for zoning amendment. This was a public hearing that was on March 27th at 7:30 PM. They wanted to amend section 3 of their zoning bylaws and insert new definitions for light industrial use and heavy industrial use, and also delete uh existing section 8 and insert new section 8 pertaining to light industrial districts, including purpose section permitted uses, special permits, and performance standards for the use in the light industrial district.
Ashby?
Ashby.
And when is that?
That was in March.
Oh, it was in March?
Yeah, March 27th.
Not decision, it was a public hearing?
Yeah, notice of public hearing.
Okay.
So then we have another one, Town of Ashby. This one's from the Planning Board. Legal notice of public hearing for zoning amendment. Let's see, public hearing will be on Wednesday, May 1st at 7:15. Public hearing starts at 7:15 for marijuana establishment. The proposed zoning amendment will amend section 8.2.5 marijuana establishments to allow more than one marijuana establishment. Public hearing at 7:30, home occupation. The proposed zoning amendment will delete sections 5.1.2 and 6.1.5 and add a definition of home occupation and a new section 4.1.3 regulating home occupations for size vehicles allowed, number of customers, among other particulars. Some uses will be allowed by special permit. This is the Town of Shirley Planning Board. They will conduct a public hearing at 6:00 PM on Wednesday, June 5th. It'll be at the Town Office Building. The applicant was, the application was submitted by Conad LLC, 182 Great Road Shirley. Request a public hearing for a site plan review. The parcel is located at 182 through 188 Great Road in the North Shirley Village District. More information available at the Town Clerk.
Okay, thank you.
And there's one final one.
Okay.
Uh, also Town of Shirley. Shirley Planning Board will conduct a public hearing at 6:00 PM on Wednesday, May 15th, at the Town Office Building. Application submitted by Sana Abidar, 52 Air Road in Shirley for a site plan review. Or a proposed coffee shop. Parcel is located at 52 Air Road in the Shirley Village Business District. More information at Town.
Okay, thank you. Um, now we are at, almost number 44.
I have 15 seconds.
So there's three people who will have to introduce themselves. And okay, 2.1, 6:45 PM. I'm going to open the public hearing for 108-112 West Meadow Road, major stormwater management permit application today, April 29th, 2024. I'd like to have the board members introduce themselves.
Carol Hoxes present.
Andrew Shepherd. Robert Darian present.
Laura Schifrin present. Um, there's a sign in sheet here. I'll give it to you. Um, but I don't think I have anybody in person here. We do have people online. So, but I have the people online. Please introduce themselves.
Uh, yeah, this is Chris Stoddard, I'm the engineer of record on behalf of Phil Colometta, the applicant.
Okay, thank you, Chris. And
I'm Jeff Walsh with Graves Engineering. I'm the peer review consultant for the Townsend Board.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, and Jessica.
Hi, Jessica Consolino, Land Use Coordinator. Hi, everybody, how are you?
Nice to see you, Jessica.
Indeed, likewise.
Okay, so is there one, one more person that has not introduced himself?
Yep, Phil Colometta applicant.
Oh, yes. Hi, Phil. Good evening. Okay, so everyone has been introduced online and in the meeting room. There's nobody else here, just for the record. And I will now read the legal notice. In accordance with the Townsend General Bylaw, Chapter 85 NPDE S-2 Stormwater Management and Chapter 175 Article 5 Stormwater Regulations, the Planning Board will hold a hybrid public hearing on Monday, April 29th, 2024 at 6:45 PM in Memorial Hall, 272 Main Street, and via Zoom to review an application received from Philip Colometta requesting a stormwater management permit for a residential development at 108 to 112 West Meadow Road. And the accessory maps, I don't know, forego that. The applicant is proposing site work with a land disturbance of 150,448 square feet of material, 2,000 cubic yards of fill, and some work on slopes um, less than 15%. Application is available for review at the Town Hall during regular business hours or by mail. And then respectfully submitted Laura Schifrin and published in Sentinel Enterprise, 15th and April 22nd, 2024. Phil, um, you would be on next. Would you like to give an update to us on your part? You're welcome to.
Yeah, I think Chris would um take the wheelhouse on an update.
Okay.
Okay.
That's fine.
Uh, yeah, thank you, folks, for having us on tonight. So we have, obviously, we submitted a major stormwater plan to you folks. It's a little unique where this is three parcels, but it was because it was originally cleared as one parcel. That's why we, we believe it has triggered a major stormwater review. So what we've done is we've installed a series of, or proposing to install a series of rain gardens around the site at the different runoff points. Um, we have sized them for having multiple houses on the properties, specifically, uh, address 108 and address 110. We have, um, we've provided a stormwater report that Mr. Walsh has reviewed the report and the plans. We did receive a peer review comments from him. Uh, we have not had the opportunity to revise them. At first blush, I see no, no issues. Uh, they're fairly routine comments and I have actually revised the model, which is per his eighth comment. Um, and no actual technical changes from the design have to be made. Everything still stays within um the design parameters that we have currently. I guess I can keep going or if I can answer questions, I don't know. However, you folks want to proceed, we can, we can go that route.
Well, I'll ask the board first. Did you see the pre-review?
Did you have an opportunity to look at the photos?
I did look at the photos.
Yes. Um, the erosion there is pretty expensive. So um, have you, I, you said that you haven't actually implemented a new proposal yet of how to correct that work or I'm not clear where you are with that and addressing that problem. And um, so my understanding is that you are reviewing the information that we've provided you and have yet to modify um or present a remedial program for it. Am I correct?
Um, that might, I'm not sure. So what I have here is the, I guess it would be the uh stormwater plan that would be implemented, assuming the board approves it uh for final restoration of the site. Speaking to the erosion issues, I don't know if I'm, I think that's a Phil and Jessica conversation. Um, this would be what the proposed finished grading of the site with, once the houses are in um final landscaping and final uh stormwater measures within the site. As far as mitigation of what has happened, that's, that's, I didn't, I don't believe that's, they're one in the same, but Jessica, you folks can correct me if I'm wrong.
Have you been updated on what's happened?
Me, no, not me personally.
I think if I might, Laura, just give a little bit of history over the last few years on this project that I think might help with some of Robert's confusion. Um, so we, so, so as Chris had, had mentioned, um, about four or five years ago, this 108, 110, and 112 property was one big lot. And at that point, when it was one big, what was it, like eight, nine, 10-ish acre lot? About three or four acres of it was logged. And then um last summer, the planning board of 2023, the Planning Board endorsed an ANR to divide that into three different lots. So 108, 110, and 112. Two houses have been built, 108 and 110. Um, I think earlier this year or late last year, you all reviewed a um Aesthenic Roads Act permit application retroactively also for the driveway and the stone wall disruption on the properties. Um, so in the, in the interim up to today, at the staff level, we've had the applicant engineer implement a winter stabilization plan. So there are some temporary measures out there in place by means of two sediment basins and some, some salt fence and other erosion control measures installed temporarily until the final stormwater management plan is approved by the Planning Board and can get installed.
Okay.
I see.
So the pictures that you saw are of the, that, that interim winter stabilization basin, two, two of the, two basins.
Okay.
So that means that we're still awaiting for the final submission. Is that correct?
This is, what you have on the table in front of you is the final submission.
Right here.
The final design, yes.
All right.
But does not have what peer review has asked for.
Correct.
Because he's not done yet.
That's right, yep. So we got, I think they received the peer review comments on Friday afternoon. So there just has not been enough time to make plan adjustments.
Yeah, and I saw them today, but I saw where they were uploaded um, and probably Saturday, probably.
Which, but Chris also said, I believe, that there's not going to be any subs, some big substantial changes.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, correct. There's, there's a few minor changes. Um, I modeled the exfiltration wrong. I have changed it on my computer and it doesn't, it does, has no effect on the size of the basin. So theoretically, what you have in front of you is the final rendering with a few additions. But basically what you got.
I don't have any direct questions. You know, looking at the photos, we've had a ton of rain and I'm not surprised the, the
Yeah. Did you get to read that?
I didn't look at the
Okay. So, I mean, it's, it's pretty quick.
It's a pretty quick read.
I did read in the comments from other departments that there were, it sounded like Jessica had a find that was outstanding. Is that still outstanding?
I think that was Conservation Commission issued that.
Yes, Conservation.
And then, yeah, Phil, I think, I think Phil paid that at the end of last week after ConsCom made that comment.
Nice.
Andrew, I'll be reading that.
Oh, yeah, okay. Gotcha. I did look at these.
You did, okay. My only question in um looking at the peer review, Jessica, this is for you procedurally. Once, we have a few more things to do here for, for this part of the hearing, but we wouldn't be able to do an approval until the, the plan was final, right? And all of the stuff from peer review was on it?
I think that would be a, a best practice, yes.
Okay. And so I'll ask the question of Chris. This will come up later. How long do you think you'll need?
Oh, probably just the week. I'm sorry, go ahead.
And to have the plan ready and peer review, you know, approved so that we can extend the hearing to that date that you're comfortable with.
Yeah, I mean, realistically, I, I could finish it this week. I don't know what Mr. Walsh's schedule is. I'm assuming he has to recheck. So I guess if I could get it to him by Friday, I don't
And, and if I could take it from there, Madam Chairman, um, I, I need just a couple hours at most with it, but given my workload, if I could have a week after we receive it, I would have a letter out.
Yeah, I won't be here physically. Which is okay. So would May 20th be okay?
Oh, uh, yeah, for us that. Yeah, no, that's totally fine.
I don't think we can accomplish it for the 6th.
No, I, I honestly wouldn't have expected you to. I think it's totally unreasonable to have requested that. Um, so yeah, the, the 20th is more than, more than okay with us.
I think that that's doable, right, Mr. Walsh?
Absolutely, Madam Chairman, yes.
Okay, thank you for that. That clarified that. Jessica, on my list, I have after the applicant and questions. Board reviews plans against towns' rules and regs and bylaws. Do you have any comments? I mean, usually Beth goes through everything and makes sure that it's here.
Well, that's Jeff's role. Um, so
Okay.
No, I I trust his thorough review. One thing I will just sort of note procedural wise is this application was submitted before you guys changed the regulations a few weeks ago. Um, so technically, this review, this application is being reviewed under your old stormwater regulations. So there is still that um stormwater easement shall be granted to the town section. Um, that was recently changed to just a, uh, oh my gosh, what was it? Something else, a right of entry agreement or, or something like that. So what I would just recommend, and I, I can coordinate if, with your permission, if it's okay, I can coordinate with the applicant, um, you know, outside of this hearing for that, but to maybe prepare a waiver to, to waive the
Yeah.
actual easement and instead have it considered with the new right of entry type of, type of agreement.
Okay, so that can be prepared for the 20th and we can handle that at that time.
If, if that works timewise for the applicant and his team, yes.
Okay.
Um, I have a question for Philip Colometta.
He's the owner.
Yes, the owner.
Phil? Okay, he's on time.
Currently, these two buildings are already erected, is that correct?
Correct.
And and there's separate owners on each of them, yes?
Correct.
Okay. My question was, and not that I have an issue with it, but it seemed like the contour modifications on four bedroom seems to direct the that site water onto the abutis property. And the retention design areas that you have are seem to be focused on the new contours between the property lines.
Is that a question for Chris?
So am I assuming that the retention concepts that are here are for the drainage coming from both lots? Whereas all of it is on one. I, I just didn't know if there was any commentary on that.
Uh, yeah. So because this was considered a major project and the entire site was taken as one while there is three different parcels, we had to design it as if it was one parcel. And because we don't own 110, we've had to circumvent that by compensating with all of the stormwater on 108. So all the impervious area from 110 actually does flow onto 108. Unfort, unfortunately, that kind of is what it is at this point. If it was one big giant site, it wouldn't really have mattered. And that's kind of the, the theory and the design practices we went with. We had to get the water to be treated. And this was the best approach that we could come up with.
I'd be concerned that that might cause some legal issues between both property owners.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. I'm not a legal expert. I can't comment on that side of it. I don't know what else to say. All right.
Any comment from Mr. Walsh on that?
Certainly. The property line, the existing topography shows that the water from both number 110, the, the right side, I'm going to use right and left on the page.
Thank you.
Okay. On the right side of, of number 110 and on the left side of number 108, the existing topography shows me that it, that runoff generally drains along the property line down page. Very common for lot development such as this to, to have the buildings higher so the water drains away from the buildings. Working with the existing topography, you can't, you know, if you walk out, in this case, the, the land drains down page to begin with. You know, as, as the two buildings are put up on the two lots, the water is just kind of forced to the property line, the common property line between number 108, number 110. That's very, very common and that's been achieved. It's in the existing conditions that I can see and it's been achieved with the proposed grading. With respect to the, the treatment, the, the topography tells me that the runoff from the driveway at number 110 is going to be included in that runoff that runs along the property line, unlike the driveway from number 108. So my point is the runoff from, from the driveway of number 110 plus some lawn runoff runs down page along the property line. And because they've already conveyed out number 110, they've chosen to put the, the rain garden that serves the driveway from number 110 on number 108. Not unusual, in my opinion. The current owner of number 110, he's, he's not a, a party that can be obligated to have to do anything, but one of our comments was to recommend that at least an easement be provided on number 108 for the benefit of number 110. So that, that if the party at number 110 was so inclined to maintain what he should be maintaining, maintaining, he'd have the right to enter onto 108 within the easement area to, to maintain that stormwater rain garden. Unfortunately, you know, where, where he's not obligated to do it because of the circumstances, I still think the easement is prudent thing to do because you don't want to slam the door shut now and have an interested homeowner now or in the future at number 110 not have the ability to get onto 108 to take care of the rain garden. But to the, to the planning board members' point about concentrating the runoff onto number 108, actually what happens, once the water comes out of the rain garden that's nearest the property line, it will flow down page, but a little bit to the left. That runoff will then enter back onto number 110. But most importantly, and to Mr. Stoddard's point, the land was, the hydrologies was looked at by looking at the analysis points being in this case, number 110 and number 108, the runoff goes to the bordering vegetated wetland down at the bottom of the page. And that was appropriate modeling. So please do know that, you know, again, the runoff, as I see it, goes to the same point. Whether it goes completely across 110 or comes off of 110, some of it comes off of 110, goes on to 108 and then goes back on to 110. I didn't see any concerning hydrologic sit, conditions to me in my review of, of the grading and the modeling. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you foresee how Townsend would have any difficulty in correcting a situation here if some problem did arise?
If there's an easement or, or that the right of entry that's, that's in the new regulations, if there was something like that in place, I see that those would allow, one or the other would allow the town of Townsend to come on to the property and maintain these things or repair them if the homeowners failed to do it. Unfortunately, with, with number 108, it's easy. The developer currently owns the property. He can put together the necessary documents so that when he conveys out that property, the obligations go with the homeowner, goes, goes from the developer to the new homeowner. Unfortunately, with number 10, I don't know. I don't know how that could be rectified with a homeowner. So then it comes down to whether or not the town of Townsend would be interested in entering onto number 108 to repair that or maintain that rain garden of number 110. I'm, I'm sorry, folks, I just don't know how those types of legal situations work with the town of Townsend or any other community like that. I know there are other, other communities that have similar types of right of entry forms, but that's beyond, where it doesn't get into the civil engineering, the hydrologic design. I, I don't, I don't get involved with that. I just don't have the expertise to guide you on that.
Okay, thank you.
Jessica, do you have any comments?
Legally, I don't know. That would, that would be something that town council would probably have to opine on. But I mean, at, at this time, I don't want to speak out of turn, but I think the ownership of property 108 has already been transferred to a private owner. So very recently.
Thank you. I wasn't aware of that.
So then, Jessica, do you think that before we meet, that you could have a conversation with town council to see what the town has to go through in reference to the stormwater situation that we will be overseeing?
Yeah, I can try. I know it's, it's town meeting season, so I know he's super busy. I will do my best to, to get some sort of guidance, but yeah, it's tricky because it is technically already two private owners. So you know, typically the town wouldn't intervene in this scenario, but this one's a little bit unique.
So, yeah, I see it as unique. I, and of course, all the abutters were notified. And none of them are here and we don't have anything in writing from the abutters or those two owners. Phil, do you have any comments regarding the owners?
Do I say it again?
Do you have any comments regarding the owners and how they perceive what's happening?
No, they're just anxious to get it wrapped up and put back together. That's, that was their comments last, this past week. The sun's shining now and they, they want to see it all put back together.
Yeah. But do they understand the stormwater situation and, and that the town has authority over it?
I, I don't believe they know that they have the authority and I actually just was aware of that tonight. I, I, I didn't know that. But I want to bring that to their attention for sure. During the closing, we were, they had their attorney in depth tell their client what was going on. They're getting this approved and the, and the rain gardens and everything.
Okay.
They, they also were given, you can correct me if I'm wrong, they were given the O and M plan for the rain gardens. So they do understand the maintenance requirements of said gardens.
On them?
Correct. Up for, for 108.
Okay. Just Jessica, I think maybe explain that situation to Adam if you get his ear for a few minutes and see what the ramifications are of that. Yeah, they're the new owners and they're supposed to maintain it. Do they realize what happens when they don't?
Sure. Yeah. And I think Chris and or Phil, who is currently listed as the responsible party for the, the O and M into perpetuity? Is that Phil?
No, let me double check, but I'm pretty sure it is.
Because that would, that would need to be sort of modified accordingly as, as approval goes on too.
Yeah, Phil, Phil is. So we could, yeah, we'd have to revise that.
So, yeah, so that, I think that would just require going a lot more in depth as to what this process is and this permit and the history behind everything with, with each of those owners. If, if they're going to be responsible for maintenance into the future and, and there's, I mean, there's annual reporting requirements as well. So those are all laid out in the O and M portion of the regulations. So there's a big chunk of change that comes with this.
So who has the third lot?
That's still currently under Phil's ownership.
Okay. So whatever happens now with this approval, is the other lot buildable?
Uh, yeah. So, yes, we would, assuming Phil decides to move forward and develop the third parcel, we would actually come back to you folks with an additional stormwater design and permits for that third individual lot.
Okay.
Yeah, this is just, this was just to get us through now because he, currently he has no plans on developing that parcel. But if, if that changes, we will obviously, we'll, we'll be submitting a new stormwater application to you folks.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
It's, it's my understanding that this is a product of a, what was originally designed for three lot, lot. And because of that, uh, now we're forced in this situation because some of the properties have been sold. And when the original design intent was for the, a much larger lot and now we're forcing all this design on one. So it would have seemed to me that the original master lot design should have been vacated and each lot should have its own comprehensive drainage design. That's my thinking. That's, and we wouldn't be having all this discussion right now.
Yeah, but we approved the A and R. Okay, it was one big lot and then we approved the A and R.
Well.
Which he had a right to.
We had a right to, and he has the right to subdivide it, which is not an issue. The issue is drainage here and how the drainage has been designed. In other words, when at the time, so oversight, an error or whatever, the situation now is we're being asked to approve of site drainage design that was originally intended for a whole lot and putting ourselves in a situation where all of it's going to be concentrated on one lot. And I don't know what the town's exposure would be if there's a problem with that.
Jessica, can you speak to that? Like going back? Because what I heard before was that once we did the A and R was when the stormwater was triggered. It wasn't triggered before.
So, no, the stormwater should have been triggered when the trees were cleared. So under the stormwater bylaw and the regulations under your authority, stormwater can get, the need for a stormwater permit can get triggered through several different means. And I'll just outline the three of them. At very bare minimum, you can disturb 40,000 square feet of ground. You can disturb greater than 1,000 square feet on a 15% or greater slope and have the need for a stormwater permit get triggered. Or you can disturb more than 1,500 cubic yards of fill and have a stormwater permit get triggered. So from, from three acres of tree clearing, three, three to four ish, that exceeded the 40,000 square feet of land disturbance. So that was on that, the big one, you know, the master lot. Individually on the lots, I think stormwater would have been triggered based on the steep slopes. Because again, it, all it takes is 1,000 square feet of disturbance on a 15% or greater slope to trigger the need for a stormwater permit. So I think any way you look at this, you know, pre or post A and R, each lot would have triggered stormwater regardless.
Each one?
Yeah. I think so.
Because of the slopes.
So it's just, it's sort of unfortunate timing because by the time all this got underway, the, the property on the left, 110, was already under new ownership. So, so Chris did have to do some navigating. was already under new ownership. So the, so Chris did have to do some navigating to design around, you know, property, a private property.
Hmm.
Um, I, I think, um, before we prove this, that we have town council to look and see if we have any legal exposure here.
Right.
Yeah.
Jessica's, we'll do that.
All right.
You'll check the town councils to make sure that the town does not have legal exposure on this episode.
Right, yeah. Yeah, I'll, I'll do my best before the twentieth. Like I said, it's, it's town meeting season, so he's pretty booked up, but um, I'll try to at least get some guidance, yeah.
Can I just try that?
Who is that?
Phil.
Phil. Okay.
I've heard that you, the word unique tonight. And I just want to apologize to the board and everybody here tonight that this was not my intentions by any means. When I bought the property in two thousand seventeen eighteen, it had the Lockbrook Run uh condo project already done and approved. People have heard of that word. So that's, intentions were to cut the land that was already approved for a property that didn't at the time need stormwater. I don't think it was in effect when it was designed. So it's kind of retroactive, but my apologies to the board and we're just trying to make it right now for, because we sold one ten and then this kind of came about. So then we put the, the winter stabilization in, Chris got his stuff done, the, his peer got it reviewed. So we're working as fast as we can to get it repaired. I think the, the main thing is to get the construction done. Let's stabilize those slopes. Let's get everything because we're at, me as a builder, I'm waiting for this approval because it's in the far side of the lot to get this work done and then work my way out and seed everything and get, get out of there. So I just wanted to, you know, this being unique is kind of had a little bit more of a history because we, we, we were approved to clear all those land, the land, put up the um, the silt fence and everything, stump it on something else's permit. And then we decided that wasn't the way I wanted to go, did the three A and R. So just wanted to say, make that clear to you guys.
Thank you.
Okay, um, just so that you know too, because of the concerns expressed tonight, we do want legal opinion. So if for some reason we can't get it by the twentieth, we'll just have to go to the next meeting.
Yeah, that, that's understandable.
Just that you know, you know, know ahead of time that we want to make sure we have all the ducks in a row before the final.
Will you still hold, or continue the hearing on the twentieth, or will you let us know ahead of time and then just postpone it? It's okay either way. I just wanted to know. That's all.
Um.
I mean, I, I, I think we, what we can do is if, if the board wants, we can have all of our plans done, peer reviewed, hopefully signed off for the twentieth. We can meet on the twentieth and if you still haven't had town council's review, I would be okay with just continuing it to your next meeting. That way we get something done.
Yeah, yeah. Sure.
I don't have a problem with that.
I think we're all good with that here.
If the, if both engineers um are communicating back and forth about um smaller stuff that's on the plan, it's really not the design side of the plan, would, would it be okay or should we start the install of these rain gardens to get this thing in the May season and the growing season get going? I know you guys aren't going to approve it tonight and it's continued, but does anybody see any issues with that?
Jessica?
You'll need to wait for your permit to be approved to get started on that, Phil.
Okay.
I think, I mean, if you wanted to like seed out in that, that back of one oh eight, that's probably okay, but actually installation of the, and, and grading associated with any of the BMPs will need to wait till you have your permit.
Okay. So, yeah, the far side, I'm not doing anything. That's already established. Far behind the last rain garden.
Okay.
But it's just the slopes, uh, the rain gardens forward to the street. But anything besides like the front lawn and all that can be done, just not the rain gardens.
Right. Yeah, and, and the grading. I would wait on the grading too.
Okay.
Yeah.
It just seems like it's a better time to seed, but I get, I understand it needs to be, so as soon as it can get approved, we're, we're ready to rock.
Okay. Andrew, you want to comment on that?
Uh, sympathetic to the nature and the timing.
For all seasons.
Yeah.
But I do think for the town's exposure, we gotta just make sure we're.
If we, if we hear it, hopefully we have it by May twentieth. You know, and you're still, you're still in spring, but you know, Jessica, do what you can and we'll book you for the twentieth. Um, which I think um, we only have the six, I think we can do it at the same time, six forty-five on the twentieth. Uh, if that works for everybody.
That, that works for us.
The Zoom, Zoom can still happen?
Zoom can still happen, yeah.
Yeah.
I will be on Zoom actually on the twentieth. If it's the twentieth, I'll be on Zoom. Okay, so the next item here is that um, I need to read the mandatory referral comments that did come in. And I have from the Conservation Commission. I will read this. You can uh speak to it, Jessica. Conservation Commission issued fine, has not been paid. Um, silt fence shall be replaced and a second silt fence is now requested due to the step grade.
Steep grade.
Steep grade. And, I have to read the words here. Um. Um, and amount of soil silt being eroded during storms. Did you get, um, Phil, did you get copies of the referrals that came in?
No. And that was kind of chop, and my internet went out and I didn't really understand what all that was.
Okay, well, my understa, this is from the conservation.
Yeah.
Um.
April tenth. Oh, no.
April twenty-fifth is when it was taken in, but um. So it says that there was a fine issued, but Jessica mentioned that you've already paid it?
Yeah, we got it at the P O box. We don't go to the P O box every day. It's once a week in Townsend. Got that and it went out via email. They might have had it already. They should have had it already.
I think she said it came in.
Oh, good.
Right, Jessica?
I think it came in late Friday. Yeah, so that, their comment was made prior to the receipt of that.
Okay, so, and then the other comment on here is the silt fence shall be replaced and a second silt fence is now requested due to the steep grade and amount of soil silt being eroded during storms.
We have two in place. We have two layers of silt fence in place and models, yep.
Okay.
And actually, the, the design plan in front of you, also we've, we show adding a second row in here, so um. To me, you approve the plans at some point. That would be required because they're on the plan set.
Okay, so our next referral is from the Land Use Coordinator. Note this application is a retroactive filing for approximately three acres of a tree cleaning on the property in two thousand nineteen. Both houses have already been built. Two, in consideration of number one, please confirm the placement of the two basin is optimal for the entire site? Question mark. Three, please note that there is currently a winter stabilization plan in place effective February, March, twenty twenty-four until a, well, stormwater management permit is issued.
A no call.
Sorry about that. Um, four, is O and M responsible person still applicable once both homes have new owners? House on one ten, West Meadow is already occupied. Uh, the next referral is from Highway Department, no comment, and the Board of Selectmen, no comment. And there were nothing from abutters or anyone else that has come in uh to our knowledge. Jessica, does the applicant usually get the copies of referrals?
We can send them, yes.
Okay, and then they probably should go to um peer review as well?
Yeah, I can send, yeah, I can circulate sort of a follow-up tomorrow to everybody, yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Uh, again, no, nothing has come in from abutters or concerned citizens. And there's nobody here from the public to ask any questions. Just reading down my list. Okay, well, I think after the um, we're, we won't be closing the hearing. I think from all the discussion, we've agreed to continue the hearing until May twentieth at six forty-five P M. Now entertain that motion.
Subwooze.
I'll suck it in. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none. I'll take a roll call vote. Carol Hawkes says yes.
Andrew Shepherd, yes. Robert Daring, yes.
And Laura Schiffin, yes. Okay, we will see you on May twenty fifty forty-five.
If I may, Madam Chairman, I just want to let you and the other board members know that I will not be able to attend on May twentieth. I've got a uh medical procedure that coming up that um, won't allow me to be here that evening, but I don't think you'll need me anyways. Now I'll uh communicate with your staff um as we take care of our review um and forward the documents um long before the meeting.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much and good luck with your procedure.
Thank you.
Any, anybody else?
No, thank you, folks. We'll, uh, we'll see you on the twentieth and hopefully we can get this thing taken care of for you.
Okay, thank you all very much.
Good night. Thank you.
Good night. Okay. So we're, we're good on that and we've already gone through number four, so our next um, the next item will be three point one. And Jessica, I don't know if you, um, but I, I did the uh, I passed the message along about the empty, about the uh schedule that's now be scheduled. Did she leave?
Uh, looks like she did.
Oh. Okay. Um. So Jessica, hold on a minute, Jessica. Three point one. Four. Three point two. Did you do three? Are you going to say shit? Oh. No paperwork for that. Uh. Okay, this is my last year. Uh. I'm okay if somebody else wants to be chair.
This is your last year. Don't you go to next year?
Well, I, I have one more. And Robert was just voted in. Congratulations.
Yes, welcome. Welcome back, Robert.
And he's sworn in. So we're all set. We do have a full board. We, uh, okay, and Michael, actually I'm told, I was reminded, um, will be on the board until June thirtieth. At which time I'll find out from um, that's when the, the appointment ends. So I'm gonna find out from Beth if we post for that vacancy as of July first. Time in June.
Okay.
So that we can address that in June. And if Michael's still interested, perhaps he will.
I think, yeah, we better post it anyway.
Yeah, so that, that will be a question for Beth.
Or do you know?
I don't think we do it before then, before June.
Is there a forum for the planning board? Is it?
Three.
Three, okay.
But if you have um something that needs certain approval, you have to have a minimum of four.
Hmm, okay.
Okay, so you can just have, and if it's like a public hearing kind of thing where you're voting on a plan.
True.
Um, they have to attend every meeting or say they have watched the meeting, read the minutes so that they can vote.
Gotcha, gotcha. They're well informed.
Yeah. Okay. And then includes uh like your alternate, your affiliate number. Um. So.
Are you gonna go all the way to the end of your term?
Unless I die.
Oh, okay.
I usually fulfill my commitments.
Okay, so you're.
But if I'm, if I'm not here.
Until twenty twenty-five.
You want to stay as vice chair?
It'll be me before her, let me tell you that.
Yeah.
Okay, so then, does, does that, everyone, if everybody agrees, you just want to make a motion that all the positions stay the same?
Yeah.
Which would leave you as general and you as clerk.
All right, then. You're vice chair.
Unless you want to be vice chair, I'm.
No.
I have no.
Well, you're supposed to sign that.
So, it's good.
Andrew has and you have, so I mean, in the absence of the chairman, everybody knows what they have to do, so it doesn't concern me.
So we're very close to space.
We just, I make a motion, we maintain the positions and offices that are currently here. And uh.
Wait, no, second.
All right, thank you.
Any further discussion? So just to highlight, I'll be the chairman, Carol will be the vice chairman, Andrew will be the clerk, and you will be our general member.
Correct.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so that's why I didn't have any paperwork. Yeah, okay. Three point two. Three point two are the warrant reports and has everybody looked at this? I mean, this is what's already on the warrant. Or.
How much we can do about it.
You're right. This is what's on the warrant, uh, submitted by the planning board. And Carol, why don't I just have you read what the, read what the motion would be. I don't think you'd read the whole thing, but just so that we have that in the record.
The motion, where is the motion?
Is that the highlight? Hmm, I mean. The bylaw review committee. This is the article. I, I don't, I don't know why she had that highlighted, but it's saying that uh, planning board members add additional reasons why this proposed amendment to the zoning bylaw is recommended here. So does anybody have any, this would have to be, this, this first one is the amendments to the regulation of accessory apartments. And I don't mind reading it if we just have it in, in the record and this way, if somebody should happen to watch this, they can hear it. So this is to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw of the town of Townsend being chapter one forty-five of the town code, section one forty-five dash thirty-six entitled accessory apartments in residential district. Uh, one. By deleting C one A in its entirety and substituting the following therefore, the applicant shall obtain and submit to the Board of Appeals a written report of the Board of Health explaining that the changes, if any, to the existing septic system have been agreed to by the applicant. I re, I remember this. This is put in there because somebody got caught. Not caught, I don't mean caught doing something wrong. I meant caught by surprise that this happened. Okay, because it should not have happened.
Right.
The system was big enough to begin with, but because there was a change and there was no change in the amount of people or enough room, there was nothing. And it was done. So, so this puts in here, the applicant has to know this ahead of time.
Yes, because prior to that, it said it had to be installed.
Yes.
Right. And so I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, me neither. This is protecting the consumer, really. Um. And two is by deleting section C one C in its entirety by deleting, which is, I'm not in front of it, it's here, I'm sorry, but um by deleting the second sentence of section C two A one and substituting the following therefore, the floor air, we've also just, the floor area of the apartment shall be no more than thirty-five percent of the floor area of the principal residence and the apartment. of the principal residence and the apartment combined.
I think the formula.
Right. Shall be no more than thirty-five percent of the floor area of the principal residence. And I understand that.
Right.
And then what does it mean, and the, the apartment combined?
I remember our discussion on this.
Right, and.
Yeah, but why would, why wouldn't it just end with thirty-five percent of the principal residence?
I think that's the basic way to leave it. Because there were all these other instances I presented.
I wonder if that's an oversight.
Of building profiles and things that.
Cause that doesn't make sense.
No, it doesn't make sense.
You were talking about basements that day.
Right.
Yeah.
So I think at the time we discussed it, we had thirty-five percent of the floor, yeah? But not to exceed, we were talking about the total units where footage, not to exceed nine hundred or something. So what did?
Whatever.
Well, the, the discussion was eight or nine hundred at the time, so what we were trying to accomplish was A, have this thirty-five percent formula, except when we have a large home, um, now limited to eight hundred or nine hundred square feet to keep, make assure it's small, right?
Yeah.
I think everybody felt comfortable with that.
I just, I, it's, when I read that, it just hit me wrong.
Well, it's not.
So I have a question.
Right.
And, and, uh, we'll, we'll have somebody explain it. Uh, four.
But it's already in the warrant, though.
Yeah, but doesn't mean it can't be amended and it can't be questioned.
Right, it should be amended.
Well, yeah.
Really, cause it's not, um, unless zoning can explain why those words are there, it doesn't make sense to me.
The other, the other part that this board discussed on that section of the bylaw was this connection with affordable units.
Yeah.
And that's not addressed there.
No, it's not. Um, by adding to the end section C two B, the following phrases. This is number four. As indicated by the report required in section C one A above.
So the bylaw committee was very adamant about not altering that portable language. They did not agree with our thinking on that. Um, cause I was trying to present, it should be by right.
I think it should be by right, but they're saying that the state doesn't allow it. The state won't allow it, it has to go, accessory apartments have to go under the state ruling and not our local ruling. Problem is that the state ruling, that, to be able to do it and not, uh, break the state ruling, the law, in other words, it's very costly unless it's a fam, you know, unless it's a family member.
I, I'd like to verify.
Well, Chaz has looked into it. Chaz has talked to people at the state.
I'm, I'm not challenging you, I just, um.
If this, if that's the state law, you cannot, you can become more restrictive, you can't be less restrictive.
Right, the town can be more restrictive, but not less restrictive. You have to do the minimum of what the state does.
It's the exact same thing when I work for the federal government, we could be more restrictive with federal law.
Different communities. Different community says that permit expires after five years.
Yeah.
And another community says it doesn't address an expiration. And so in other words, if you have one of these units, in some communities, you have to reapply every five years.
I don't know what the state rules are, but in some communities, might not even know what state rules are.
The cost factors do not come in with the word affordable, okay? The cost factor does not come in unless it's not a family member.
Unless what?
If it's a family member, there's no cost factor for the term affordable.
Right.
Okay, but if it's not a family member, that's when the cost factor comes in and it's big.
Hmm.
It's big. So by big, I mean anywhere from ten, fifteen, twenty-five thousand dollars for one unit.
A year or what?
No, to rent it, no, to get an affordable person. You can't do it on your own.
Lottery.
You have to do a lottery.
Pay that fee?
Yeah. I worked two or three months on this for some, for somebody that was.
This is worse every time I touch it.
Oh, no, I think I told everybody when it was going through it.
Yeah, I think you see that, so that.
So, um, anyway, let me just finish with this.
Well, I just, before I do anything, I'd like to know whether it's, where it is in the state statute.
You're probably just gonna go to the state and circle it, yeah, search, whatever.
They have, just do state accessory apartment. Affordable accessory apartment, and make sure that'll come up, Massachusetts. Uh, let's see, five, by adding to the end of section C two, C two C, and I know, oh, Jeff, she did tell me that she had to leave before seven thirty. Jessica did, yeah. Um, and to end this, okay, quote, this will be supported by a note from the building department that the appropriate codes have been observed, unquote, and by deleting from the section E three C two and E three F references to D H C D and submitting therefore references to the Executive Office of Housing, and, oh, that's because they changed the name. So that part is just to comply with what the state now calls itself. Which is Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. How much money we spend on that one?
I'm sure a lot.
Yeah. And what is the result?
Right, you let me read this one? Uh, this one is the general requirements for all large-scale ground-mounted solar power installation. In accordance with, um, general law, chapter forty A, section five, the planning board held a public hearing on Monday, April first, twenty twenty-four, to review a proposal submitted by the planning board to amend zoning bylaw article sixteen, chapter one forty-five dash eighty-six, renewable alternative energy, section C, entitled general requirements for all large-scale ground-mounted solar power installations. The planning board voted unanimously to recommend adoption for the following reasons, one, the proposed amendment will remove the planning board application filing fee from the text of the bylaw and included in appendix E, planning board fee schedule table added to chapter one seventy-five, planning board regulations in the code of the Town of Townsend. Two, the proposed restructuring will allow for fees to be changed through the process of amending regulations instead of requiring a town meeting vote. Three, the fee schedule table created and added as a appendix to chapter one seventy-five, planning board regulations is a user-friendly format to assist with permit application under the board's purview. Um, and then it's article weighing fees for large-scale ground-mounted solar installation. To save the town a vote to amend the zoning bylaw of the Town of Townsend being chapter one forty-five of the town code, section one forty-five dash eighty-six, entitled large-scale ground-mounted solar installation, that section C entitled general requirements for all large-scale ground-mounted solar power generation installations by striking therefore, therefore in its entirety, item three, which presently reads three, um, presently reads fees, the application for a permit for a large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installation shall be accompanied by a fee of three hundred and by substituting the following therefore, fees, the application for a permit for a large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations will be accompanied by a fee as required by appendix E to the consolidated rules of the Town and Planning Board entitled fee schedule or take any other action in relation there too.
Okay, that, that's what we did.
Yeah, and then this one here.
And nothing to bring up on this, no questions here.
I think so. Are we supposed to actually add something here? Is that why this is highlighted? Cause it says the planning board members add additional reason why this section is recommended here.
Yeah, if you want to.
Oh, we don't have to.
If you want to.
All right, so this.
I mean, I'm not gonna make you.
All right, oh, this would be after the line.
I mean, here, it's here said the same thing, just on the accessory apartment thing, I think that's our only question.
Oh, okay, okay. All right, so this is reported in, um, meaning proposed zoning amendment article sixteen, chapter one forty-five dash fifty-two, entitled outdoor lighting. In accordance with general law, chapter forty A, section five, the planning board held a public hearing on Monday, April first, twenty twenty-four, to review a proposed proposal submitted by the planning board to amend zoning bylaw article sixteen, chapter one forty-five dash fifty-two, outdoor lighting. The planning board voted unanimously to recommend adoption for the following reasons, number one, the proposed amendment will delete section one forty-five dash fifty-two, entitled outdoor lighting in its entirety, remove and replace it with a new general bylaw for outdoor lighting. Number two, the bylaw review committee drafted the new outdoor lighting as a general bylaw and submitted it to the board of selectmen as part of the change of the committee to review the zoning bylaws of the Town of Townsend.
Yeah, the general bylaws don't come under us. That's what I learned from that one.
Oh, okay, three, fees, the application for a permit for large-scale ground, but, oh, that must have just got stuck on here. They've been, they, no, it talks about ground-mounted solar thing. Part of that. Oh. Yeah, that's kinda weird. Oh, okay, I see, they submitted this part. Um, okay, submitted by this article, okay, then it goes deletion of outdoor lighting provisions in the zoning bylaw.
This article's on fees only.
Okay, fees, but something.
Fees for large-scale ground-mounted solar.
Yeah, see what happened is somehow at the top of this, the lighting is down here, but this is all about the ground-mounted solar at the top. I don't know how that. Uh, I don't even understand what this is doing. Um, cause it was all about the solar, this comes down, all right, to save the town a vote to amend the zoning bylaw of the Town of Townsend being chapter one forty-five of the town code, by deleting section one forty-five dash fifty-two, entitled outdoor lighting in its entirety or take any other action there too. Um, the article will delete the outdoor lighting provisions that are currently located within the zoning bylaw. And you were directed to serve this warrant by posting apertastic copies thereof at the board, that, 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 I think it's something line, which is okay, I'm not following it. There's something, something at Staples, I accidentally. When you go to the next page, you get confusing. It talks about the ground-mounted solar.
Yeah, well, this is the same. This is the same as this.
Okay, but this is about the outdoor lighting.
Right, which is here.
Yeah, and then you get.
Okay, so.
So basically it's just deleting in entirety.
Cause that was here, yeah.
Okay.
That's, that's exactly it.
Okay.
So our part was to delete it.
Okay.
Okay, and the, the bylaw review committee.
Rewrote it.
Right.
Okay, okay, all right, that makes sense.
On the lighting?
As a zoning bylaw.
Yeah, okay.
Shall we move to eliminate bylaw or? Is that what we do?
Currently located in the zoning bylaws, there's, yeah, it's being deleted in the zoning bylaws.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
So, is there any comment on the sound ordinance?
No, no, that, that, this was, this was, well, this was three. This was three point three, the section we just did.
Okay.
Now, three point four.
Including all the economic development projects.
Oh, three point three. So three point three on here, we have, uh, review discussed May seventh, special and annual town meeting warrants. Um, anybody want to, this has got the bylaw, the lighting bylaw in it, as you, well, this is all the.
All the, yeah, these are all the warrants.
Um.
No, we, we didn't do anything.
No.
No, so this is just for us to review and you can review that, think on your own, because we're not gonna act on them as a board.
At the meeting, right?
I'm just gonna bring your attention to the zoning bylaw change on the special, which I couldn't find online, but I could find it in. This is the special.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
So go to article fourteen.
Okay.
Which takes a two-thirds vote. And that is to change, to amend the Townsend zoning bylaws, to change the zoning of the property depicted on whatever, thirty-nine Greenville Road, which is the, they were here.
Yeah.
He was here.
Comes before us next, next week.
Monday.
Yeah.
Um, in the adjacent property depicted on accessories map, blah, 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 and having an address of Greenville Road from industrial to residential, or take any other action there too. So since um, so I, I remember that when we had our last, when we did the meeting with, and, and zoning was here, bylaw committee.
Mm-hmm.
Bylaw committee and planning, okay? So which meant that zoning was represented here. And a comment was made, and I, I didn't think of it like right away, it just came to me this weekend, that the comment was made that we have little industrial as it is. So why would we change it? So I sent an email to the group. Um, and our, our B O S rep, so Jessica, Jessica Beth.
Teresa?
Chaz. No, Chaz is our.
Oh, he's back to being our.
Our, he's our liaison. If that changed, I didn't know it.
Teresa came to one of our meetings.
Oh, yeah, but that's bylaw.
Bylaw, she was, she was.
She was liaison to bylaw.
Yeah.
Or. So you're not that far.
Okay, I thought it, I got you.
Yeah. Um, so a couple things that I thought was, now the public notice is out now a week because we have it next week, so it had to be two weeks ago, did that, so that we could have some discussion regarding it, so in order, to me, in order to be informed, I wrote asking for a list of all the industrial properties in town.
Hmm.
So I wanna know what, you know, next week when we're talking.
On which we are.
Yeah, because if somebody made that remark here and it was, um, televised, if anybody, you know, sees the meeting, it's a question that's probably gonna be asked on the floor.
Sure.
Okay? So I figured we should know that, and supposedly I will have that, um, this week. Okay, there was a list that was sent to, um, Chaz and he then sent it to somebody to see to it that, that I get all the parcels, I'm really, I don't know if I'm interested in all the cards to them, but if I have, just have a. if I have, just have a list with, or we would have a list of the parcels and how big they are, where they are and how big they are.
Isn't that our zoning map already? I don't know if it's, I'm sure.
I'm sure it is, but we'll find it.
But if you have at least a number of parcels, cause somebody might ask you, you know, list or whatever.
And we used to have. We used to have a map. Okay, so it, so we can use that map along with our list.
Is all Greenville Road industrial?
No, no.
I think.
You know, it's spot zoning.
Just true.
It is spotted throughout town.
I know, they said they had thousands on those lots.
Oh, great. It is spotted right up here.
That's Greenville. Okay, so here's Greenville Road.
That's a historic section.
No, that's our shop.
That's your shop.
Yeah.
That's your shop.
I think so.
Yeah.
What?
Where the person in the middle was.
Oh, the Grisna?
Yeah, well.
Oh, no, you're, the long.
No, yeah, you're, you're, you don't want to lose that.
Didn't there used to be a railway station?
I don't, there was one at the hardware store, True Value, I don't know if we had a hardware.
Ask your dad.
Oh, yeah, alright.
Yeah.
I know it was the Fez.
It looked a lot different when I drove into town the first time.
Yeah?
Yeah.
I, I've seen photos before it got demolished.
Yeah, I grew up when it was still there.
Okay, so here's, here's.
Could have been Fez.
It was a leatherboard mill.
Yeah, I went inside and I saw the leather belts and pulleys, and yeah, it was so cool.
Yeah, here's Greenville Road, so that must be where the houses are in that zone. She is the little one.
Where Road Street.
Bring this man to the town, maybe you can say he is.
They probably will, but we'll have it for next week.
Is this where, uh, Sterilite is? Uh.
This is gonna be the main street Sterilite.
Yeah. So these are existing.
They're across the street parking.
Yeah, that's Sterilite, right, okay.
Transformer little area, here, here.
And then.
And this is.
Across the street where the two family was, is zoned industrial?
No, 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 across there, across the street parking and the gas station.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. It's a gas station.
Gas station.
Yeah, the parking.
Yeah.
Employee parking.
Alright, and this is already, uh, where is this?
This would be partial to the, some of the golf course, I believe.
Yeah, there's a golf course somewhere here.
Oh, yeah. Um, and then the Sterilite, main offices, uh, King's, um, garden, and King's.
So is that the little dollar store plaza?
No. Nope, nope, this is Scale's land, this is right behind Yee's Village.
Oh, that's way down.
This is, this is thirteen here.
Right here.
Oh, okay, I'm past thirteen, okay.
You're going towards West Townsend.
Oh, that's where Yee's, Yee's Chinese.
Yeah, Yee's is like right here, and then you can take that road in.
Was that Bates across the, not that.
Oh, Barrows. Barrows.
Bates used to be down here.
Okay, but there's another industrial building.
This is a little.
This is where Townsend Board and all that is.
Okay.
Barrows, Barrows is right around here, but they don't seem to be zoned industrial.
This is a little tiny little industrial zone right here.
But Turnpike. Yeah, and then there's more Turnpike.
This is MJS Metals.
Yeah.
Somewhere in here.
And a sand pit and other things, which I think is trying, changed hands, because in the last week, there's trucks galore.
Oh, really?
On what used to be, I don't know if you know, John Woolen's like garage.
I'm not sure.
It's a metal garage that's next to the sand pit that was owned by, um, the gravel pits name in Lunenburg.
Powell? No, oh, Keating's?
Owned by Keating, but I think he sold it. That's the empty spot, and then next to it is that metal building, and then MJS Metals.
Hmm.
It's like a garage metal building, it used to be owned by John Woolens.
Hmm.
Okay, but that building all of a sudden has.
Trucks.
Trucks.
Okay.
And there's a lot of trucks on Turnpike Road.
Well.
And at the houses. If you, if you drive up like around where Nick lives.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
The houses all after that, going towards the farm.
Yeah.
Trucks everywhere.
Oh, really? No kidding? Hmm.
And that's, I'm sure that's not zoned industrial, but it looks like.
So it was, when we read the public notice, it was two parcels on Greenville, off of Greenville Road?
Yeah, thirty-nine and forty, I think.
Uh.
Well.
Oh, so it would actually.
You read the notice.
I did, but I don't know where it was.
Okay.
So how much of this would become residential versus industrial? It is mostly residential anyways, or is there a lot of industry up there?
There's not much industry.
Oh, the recycling center that I've never found, I tried finding it one day, I got lost, but like, I'll never find this recycling center.
Yeah, so the question is.
The driveway comes up on your face.
Yeah, like, there's like no sign or anything to tell you.
Do we have enough industrial areas?
I think there are.
I don't see where there are many areas in town that would even support industry.
They just sold that little brick that's down just before the lights. That little, so if you're coming from here, going to the lights down by South Street, by the harbor, that building that was boarded up for years, so carpeting in the windows, yeah, they sold it.
The old gas station.
No, it was like a carpet store.
Yeah, they provided that, it was a gas station.
Oh, was it a gas station before?
Yes, it was, in the harbor.
Yeah.
What, what, I know it had nice paving up front, but I can't figure out what, what it's gonna be.
I think he cleaned it, paved it, and I thought he put it for sale tonight out.
Oh.
Think that's what he did. Well, it looks like a quick flip, or attempted, attempted to do a quick flip.
Oh, yeah, but, you know, the, the house that burned down, or that didn't burn down, but had the house fire on Ash Street.
That's interesting, cause it doesn't show up here.
As far as I know, I guess from what I've heard from the neighbor, she's definitely gonna do anything with that.
Or.
I see that.
It's a mess.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We're dealing with the insurances, it's, it's tough.
Well.
I mean, I, I know we're thinking about the, uh, in my head, I think of it as like the Townsend Ford lot, or the old used car lot by here for the M P T A, but I wouldn't see why that couldn't be industrial.
That would be the most likely place.
And it's right on a good.
Surface of a road.
Well, it's already a lot of industry along.
Right into Lunenburg.
Yeah, right into Lunenburg, there's a lot of stuff, industry.
Well, it's the closest part of town, closest to a major highway, too.
Okay, it's Assessor's Map six, block, block eleven, lot zero. Adjacent property depicted as map five, block twelve, lot zero. That's what the public notices.
Would you say it was map five?
Well, it's, it's map five, block twelve, and map six, block eleven.
Where would that be?
Hopefully, this is right.
So.
I don't know, it's. Having an address of thirty-nine Greenville Road.
Do you say lot twelve on map five?
Yes.
The lot twelve on map five is this, based on my understanding, this little sliver here. So that's one sliver, and then I would guess, you said map six?
Yeah, block eleven. I'll, I'll probably get the, you know, few cards.
Oh, well, I don't wanna say it doesn't look like much, but it's this sliver, and then it's this first.
So it's not the whole thing.
No, it's just those lots.
They wanna change it from industrial to what?
Residential.
Cause it tells us they have now, at least that's what I read, that there's houses on those lots.
And then you have all this industrial around them?
I don't think they're, no. He has an industrial style building there, I didn't go walk it, I, I haven't, I haven't been there.
No, I.
But he stated that there was an industrial style building there, which his neighbors didn't like. Okay, he, he went through a lot to get that, but there's also an older house there. I don't know if. Sometimes you have, well, it has on here that it's thirty-nine Greenville Road, even though there's different maps and lot numbers, they can all still be the same of the same address. Right?
Mm-hmm.
So I guess we'll know more, I, I'll try to get more information for next week.
So this, this is going for the town meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's article fourteen.
Yeah, it's on.
It changes the zoning, that was specific laws.
Yes.
Yeah.
He was here and he did say that that's what he wanted to do, and I don't know.
Why doesn't he try to get a special permit?
To do what?
He wants to put, he wants to put a, um, I think it was like his daughter wanted to put a house up. I thought that was part of what he said. Um.
So.
I don't know, you know.
There's no residential use allowed in an industrial area, is that what I understand?
Well, my understanding was different, because I stated it in the meeting, that I thought, I didn't know that he had to have it rezoned.
Hmm.
The, the town administrator did not, not agree, he's the one, I think, that recommended that he go for the zoning change. So, cause normally, like, if you're in a, if you were downtown commercial and you went to a residential use.
Hmm.
You could not turn it back to commercial.
Right.
If, if you legal, if you.
Right.
Went to have it.
Because that would be, that's a new zoning for that specific lot.
But the thing is, it, it's allowed in those areas. But you can't change it back, once you go lesser, you can't go more. And I, and having industrial or commercial zoning is a higher zoning use.
Right.
Um, so it'll be interesting, I mean, it's gonna be the town meeting that's gonna do it, it's not gonna be us. But the public, but we are obligated for the public hearing, yeah.
We, for the public hearing.
For the public hearing, we're not, we, we don't have to speak to it on town floor.
Sure. Will we make a decision in our planning board public hearing?
Recommendation.
No, I think it's on.
No, they kind of just said that it was, when they were here, explaining it to us, those were my thoughts about that I didn't think it was necessary, because you could always do that, you could always go to a lesser use anyway. But the. I guess that, that was not what the powers that be thought, so Board of Selectmen said that if he got, you know, the petition to be put on the warrant, they would um, approve it to go on the warrant. So they had the placeholder, and somebody was saying, well, if it wasn't in by a certain date, it shouldn't have been put on, but apparently he's been looking into this or talking with the town for months.
Sure.
So it was not like an overnight thing, it just.
Well, looking at this, just this map here. The areas that are zoned industrial now, to me, looks like it represents fifteen percent of the town.
I don't think it's that much.
Plus.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Yeah, more like.
Right, and then take out the state land, right?
Oh, no, 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 that's, that's all, the, the state is over one third of the town.
I know, so, uh, so even though it's a small amount of industrial as a percentage of what it is, what we have to work with in this town, it's large, you know, I mean, five, it might be five percent of the whole town land area, but in terms of the use that's available, uh, it's substantial, I mean, you know, more than.
You mean there's, are you saying, Robert, there's still a lot of available industrial land?
Right, in terms of ratios.
Sure.
We take the whole town, and we look at this, and it says, oh, there's quite a bit of gray area. But then when you take out what the town doesn't have control over, all the state property, right? Um, that's even a bigger.
So where's the dollar store, isn't that like industrial?
Wait, wait, let me finish, um.
No, downtown commercial.
So, in other words, looking at this visually, you look at the gray, and it looks like a significant amount of industrial. Now you take out the areas.
Doesn't look significant to me.
That, uh, not under uh, control, and it was all a third of the land that state owned. This, you take that out of the picture, this becomes larger, the gray areas. Um, so, which says to me we certainly don't want any more, and we probably have more than we'll need right now.
To my knowledge, right now, without seeing the list.
Hmm.
I think that there is something on every industrial piece in town.
There is.
Yeah.
Right. But in terms of.
So there is no more really to be had.
Um, well, it's not a matter of what's developed or undeveloped land, really, is how much of the town is available for that use.
Not much. Not much. But that's why I wanted to see the list, because I don't, I don't know at all.
The other, I hear what you're saying, Lori, but we all, I mean, as we've been discussing with the housing shortage as well.
This is why we should have buy right apartments.
Sure, yeah.
Exactly why, because of how things are today.
Right.
And the lack of housing.
Right.
Availability.
Sure.
If you can make it within your own home, not much impact on the water, not much impact on the septic, not much impact on the schools, you're talking about an apartment.
Sure.
You know, it's like the way to go.
So what we have is the area where Andrew is, and behind that is where Deluxe Chucks is, here.
Yes.
And then there's nothing until we get to.
Sterilite?
Sterilite.
Sterilite gas station.
Right. Um, however, there's still commercial on, in there.
Yeah.
Alright, and then we get down to where the area of Townsend Port is, is that where I'm visiting this?
Yeah, Townsend Port, I would imagine.
There's a gas station, or there was.
There was a gas station.
Benjamin, um, condos there.
None of those seem to be, everything inside of the railroad track seems to be non-zoned industrial. So Townsend Ford doesn't seem, cause this seems to be the railroad track.
Right.
Which separates Townsend Ford and Sterilite.
No, Sterilite's down.
There's two Sterilites, there's the one on Main Street.
Oh, I see.
And there's Main Office, Office Steel.
You see the signs.
So that's.
Where the golf courses.
Correct, the golf course would be, I think, somewhere around here, and then, I don't know. But I, I think this little, little, little bit is, is the railroad track.
Yeah, I think so.
And Townsend Ford's right off the street.
Right.
Um.
So that would be commercial, anyway.
Sure, yeah. What is the N C D, what is the white, uh, O C D?
I have no idea.
Okay.
Well.
Commercial district.
Commercial district, but I don't know what.
N or O?
Well, this is downtown. D C D is downtown commercial, so what is that, north commercial district? Here's another one, gold, commercial district, oh, outside, okay? Oh, neighborhood.
Neighborhood.
Neighborhood commerce, I don't know, I'm making this up.
But it sounds good.
But it sounds good.
Yeah, that sounds good.
So that's definitely a commercial district.
So outside commercial is going to be, um, thirteen?
Um.
It's white, white.
White.
Oh, that's what, um.
Well, both of these are white, white.
Like there.
Or Kennedy Road.
That's district. That's District Two, the proposed MBTA area, one of these is.
Okay.
Townsend Ford's old used car lot.
Okay.
For communication, I believe.
Okay. So that area connects with Old City?
Uh, well, this is Robert's house. Robert's house is right here.
So.
What's this?
I think that's an access road maybe for the forestry that they have going on.
Right.
It's not really a road up to Old City there.
That last antique house there on the corner.
Yeah.
Everything else is already just outside Commercial District.
Uh, so Clement Road is here, uh, I would think it'd be one of these.
It's before Robert's house?
Correct, closer to the center too.
It is.
Uh, Lori asked about one of your neighbors' homes.
Oh, Jim's house? He's right, um.
Right before.
Oh, he is, okay. I just wondered.
He's right there. It's Jim's house.
Yeah, we definitely have to have the map, and then you have the list, then at least we can, we can speak intelligently, you know, about it and answer questions during the public hearing. Or people can see what it is we're talking about.
We need to bring this?
Well, we're gonna have it at public hearing here.
Oh.
Monday night.
Oh, okay. Oh, it's here.
Okay.
Yeah. Wow.
All right, let me see where we are on the agenda, because it's getting late. Anyway, I have trouble keeping track of my agenda.
It's easy to get lost.
So we did three point three, and well, that's the annual. Everybody do their own thing now, doing that, and the only thing on the special that I knew took your attention was the zoning by law. Um, and that was my determination, not anybody else's.
Will any, should, should we plan if any of us will speak at town meeting on behalf of?
Um, it can be you, it can be anybody that needs.
Okay. You guys wanna split them up?
No, we don't have to speak, don't speak.
I get to, yeah, they're pretty self-explanatory. I guess we'll just leave them, let them be, and if anyone has questions, then go forward.
I, I think.
I'm not planning to.
Yeah, sure, sure.
Generally, what usually happens.
It's actually, I won't be at the town meeting, I was probably at a softball game.
Oh, man.
I gotta drive my granddaughter out to Westminster.
Oh, that's fun. That's fun. How old is she now?
Ten. She's on softball, so we gotta go to Westminster on the.
I did that for a lot of years, I served at six, finished in college.
She's been, yeah, she's been with softball for a few years now, now, but, but she's on two, she's on a travel team with.
Just travel.
Gems. And then the, the town, the town, the town team. So then, and then the other one, the older one is, takes eight hours of dance classes a week, so I'm going up to Fitchburg. The Tanya's Dance Studio. Twice a week, and I, I think my son-in-law does, once a week, I do twice a week, so.
Okay, um, three point four to review and discuss if you want is the economic development projects managed by MRPC.
Okay, MRPC has started three economic development projects that we want you to be aware of and play a crucial role in. Number one, EDA-funded update to the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. Number two, EPA-funded groundfield assessment remediation plan project. And three, EDA-funded future industrial lands for long-term economic recovery and resiliency.
Uh, okay, so it should benefit all of the participants in MRPC, as far as cities and towns.
Okay, so the CIDS update, which is the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. While we are in the process of updating the data for the plan, we are interested in hearing about any project that you may want to include in an update to those already listed, if you haven't done so already. Um, I have attached a nomination form to this email in case you have a project you may want to include. Do we have any projects for that?
No.
Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. Oh, the project listed for Townsend, my current CDS, is revitalization of downtown Townsend. Well, that would be nice, I guess.
They get grant money, and then you get to ask for things in your town that they can work on with the grant money.
Okay, revitalizing downtown.
Which, by the way, is still our money.
Is what?
It's still our money.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, it's all tax money.
Right.
It's all tax money, it's not free money, it comes from the.
Right.
Right.
It may not come out of your property taxes, so the brown.
So the only thing we can do is hope that it helps the community.
Yeah. Okay, for the brownfield assessment, in present, there's an RFQ open seeking a qualified licensed psych professional. Uh, we'll go over the submissions, okay, and future industrial lands. Focus of this project involves verification of properties for the future development, industrial technology, business park from various locations throughout the region. Do we have anything?
Did you say industrial?
Yeah, industrial, future industrial land. About industrial technology and business park in various locations throughout the region, uh, will be instrumental in ensuring that the analysis of the infrastructure needs are accurate. As MRPC has become the inventory of existing infrastructure, once complete, the information will be sent to each town, city for feedback prior to presenting information at a future meeting.
Okay. Cause we certainly don't have any programs for economic development here. We should, it's part of the future, but. Three point five is review and comment MRPC transportation planning documents. Basically, in a nutshell. This, this is in the port hole, okay, cause she's got full docks in the one drive. Um, our only participation was this, um, my, uh, bus.
The bus. Is anybody riding it still?
No, so they did, I think everybody got the email saying, take the survey. And the survey's not long, it doesn't take long to do. Um, so hopefully they get enough feedback, you know, to do something for Townsend, but it's too bad, we just don't have the, uh, people living here that would.
Use it.
Use it.
I wouldn't use the, I looked at the survey, but there wasn't really anything I could answer, because I wouldn't use it. Yeah, but I, I wouldn't use it, because I'm not gonna go from here to the Fitchburg Center to go, what, take a train to wait to Boston?
Yeah.
No, because i- if I have to go to Boston, I'm going to Longwood down by the hospitals for my daughter. And going by train is not, does, is, there's no way, easy way to get there, I gotta drive, I just gotta drive.
I, it's just, um, it's just not the demographics in town.
I was just gonna say, we just don't have the clientele, or, you know, the residents to live in towns, and you have to have a car.
This is all in the pretext, everybody's gonna wanna work in Boston, and that's not the case here.
Or be in Fitchburg or Manchester.
Right.
You know, so, all right, so that's, that's a transportation thing, unified, yeah, they, they have different, um, acronyms now for different names of programs they've changed, and that's all three point five. And we did all of four point one. And the next meeting is Monday, the sixth.
Okay.
So having said that, uh, I wanna thank you all very much, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
At eight thirty-one on twenty-nine, is it twenty-nine April?
Twenty-nine of April.
Twenty twenty-four.
Um, does anybody wanna discuss this?
Discuss what?
A motion to adjourn.
No.
All right, I will take it as a consensus that everyone voted to adjourn.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.